Go on, and I will start off with the electronic meeting script. We're gonna put that up with a share screen so everyone can along with my dramatic reading.
And we'll have it up in just a moment.
Let's see. There we go. Lots of tabs open right now. I could start reading anyway. Okay. Here we go. To conduct this meeting wholly electronically and to effectuate both the emergency procedures authorized by FOIA and the emergency ordinances, Library Board of Trustees needs to make certain findings and determinations for the record. First, because each member of this Library Board of Trustees is participating in this meeting from a separate location, we must verify that a quorum of members is participating and that each member's voice is clear, audible, and at an appropriate volume for all of the other members. Accordingly, I'm going to conduct a roll call and ask each Library Board member participating in this meeting to state your name and the location from which you are participating. I ask that each of you pay close attention to ensure that you can hear each of your colleagues. Following the roll call, we will vote to establish that every member can hear every other member. So I will now call the roll, and I'm gonna start with our newest members so that we can welcome them at the same time. Not being official. So SuJatha Hampton.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes. And where you're participating?
I'm sorry, I'm from my office in my house.
Okay, great. And Keith Fox, if you are here and can answer?
Yes, yes, good evening, everyone. This is Keith Fox, and I'm participating from my office in Springfield, Virginia.
Thank you. And I just realized it was probably cruel to ask the two people who haven't done it before, although SuJatha did. Okay, moving on, Brian.
Brian Engler, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm in my home in Burke, Virginia.
Okay, thank you. And Miriam Smolin?
Hi, good evening, Miriam Smolin, and I'm in my home in Fairfax County.
Thank you. Jane Miscavige?
Hi, Jane Miscavige, in my home in Vienna, Virginia.
Thank you. Suzanne Levy?
Hi, Suzanne Levy, in my home in the city of Fairfax.
Sheila Janigo?
Sheila Janigo, in my home in Reston, Virginia.
Gary Russell?
Gary Russell, in my home in Mount Vernon.
Priscilla Dando?
Priscilla Dando, in my home in Woodbridge.
Phil Rosenthal?
Oh, Rosenthal, my home, Fairfax Station, Virginia.
Is Liz Walker here yet? No. Fred Milhouser. At this point, I will pass the virtual gavel to the vice chair so that I may be heard to make the requisite motion. So Jane, you're now in charge. I move that each member's voice may be adequately heard by each other member of the Library Board of Trustees.
I second that motion, Brian.
Thank you. And does everyone approve? Say aye.
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 Thank you. Second, having established that each member's voice may be heard by every other member, we must next establish the nature of the emergency that compels these emergency procedures, the fact that we are meeting electronically, what type of electronic communication is being used, and how we have arranged for public access to this meeting. Therefore, I move that the state of emergency caused by the COVID-19 pandemic makes it unsafe for this board to physically assemble, and unsafe for the public to physically attend any such meeting, and that as such, FOIA's usual procedures, which require the physical assembly of this board and the physical presence of the public, cannot be implemented safely or practically. I further move that this board may conduct this meeting electronically through a dedicated Zoom meeting, and that the public may access this meeting by... Should I read that?
No. By this.
We're obviously here.
So... That's another motion that I need a second.
I'll second it.
Thank you. And if I may have a voice vote approval, say aye.
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 It's so moved. And then finally, it is next required that all of the matters addressed on today's agenda must address the emergency itself, are necessary for continuity in Fairfax County government, and/or are statutorily required or necessary to continue operations of the discharge of this board's lawful purposes, duties, and responsibilities. It is so moved. We need a second on that as well?
I'll second again.
Okay, and all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now I guess when Liz comes, we'll include her. Okay, so that's done. Now, the next thing on the agenda is public comment, and I will read the introduction for public comments. The Library Board wishes to provide an opportunity for the public to comment on library-related issues. It is our policy to hear a maximum of five speakers at each regularly scheduled board meeting. Speakers are limited to one public comment during a six-month period. Each speaker has a maximum of three minutes for their comments. A 30-second warning will be given before each speaker's time is up, and the speaker will be expected to end promptly when time is called. Speakers are requested to preregister with the library director. However, if there are available public comment slots open at the time of a board meeting, remaining slots may be filled by individuals registering at the meeting. Board members will not question or respond to speakers. There are no registered speakers that I know of. Does anyone else have anyone here who's... Okay. And if anyone who is here wishes, or if anyone wishes to speak at a future meeting, call the director's assistant at 703-324-8323 to register. Okay, thank you. And now... The presentation for tonight of the Friends Stories. And so we're gonna share a screen once again. Okay, great. Okay, so next slide. Right. So as you read this, as you know, most of us know, usually in October, the Library Board has a wonderful celebration, the Friends of the Library groups through the Friends Choice Awards. And for our new members, that involves we meet at the Kings Park Library, and the Kings Park Friends supplies an amazing buffet for us before the meeting and for the volunteers who are being recognized. And then, because we're in a virtual format, we're not gonna be doing that. And for that reason, the normal Friends Choice Awards were canceled just for this year, and in its place was Devol, da-da-da-da, Friends Stories. So what we did, what we asked admin to do was to contact the Friends groups and tell us the story of how they've been managing throughout the pandemic and the COVID. And as the stories were received, we will be highlighting the work that they were able to do during this difficult time. It also means that instead of having State Representative Mark Sikles, who is fantastic wit and does a wonderful job as an emcee, recognizing everyone, you'll have me reading to you once again. So next slide, please. And the first one just happens to be a group of friends from the Mason District. My district, I can talk about them. The Friends of Thomas Jefferson, or TJ, it is a very small group. But they, what they did was they gave the branch $4,000. And part of what the friends, what the staff did was for their make-and-take programs, which they usually have in the building, but they prepared kits to give to kids to take home with them to make their craft. So that was a wonderful... I think that they didn't use the total $4,000 for that, but that was one of the things that they did at TJ. The other thing with TJ, the TJ Friends asked for about 20 yard signs and for the bond issue, and put them up all over the neighborhood. So that was really great. Next. The Friends of the Burke Center Library, and I will read them. Brian, do you wanna read that or let us know anything?
Well, I can read them if you like. Yeah, we've been holding virtual meetings as well over Zoom. We held our election because we normally have our annual meeting in April, and couldn't do it, we had to cancel it. We held our election for officers via email, and that worked quite well. I don't know exactly how Nancy Davis, our membership chair, handled it, but she did all the counting and stuff. Of course, we always elect the same four people, so... Pat Redinger's the president, Duane Cat to the treasurer, I'm the secretary, you know, that kind of thing. Lee Skars, the vice chair. Nobody ever runs for those spots. But it went well. We are doing our ongoing book sale, and either Joy Whittington or I show up about every day and make sure that the books are still there, and, you know, no empty spots. And they've been selling reasonably well. We make, I don't know, maybe a hundred bucks a week, something like that. And then I guess Jill Johnson put that last statement up there.
She does. She really, really appreciates all the hard work that your group has been doing.
Oh, thanks. And we, you know, we missed all the money we didn't make on our last three sales that we've now missed. But they're usually $10,000 to $12,000 each sale. So that's a lot of money that did not come in. But we'll keep going.
Well, and I have to...
That's all I have.
Oh, I have to let you know that Nancy Davis and I work together in Arlington County Library System.
Oh, okay. See, I noticed that there's no Friends of Kings Park in here, but I will say, since they're also in my district, that they also are doing their ongoing sale and keeping it up to date and so on. So I'm sure they're working well with the library staff as well.
Oh, great. Thank you, Brian. The Friends of the Martha Watchin Library, one of Gary's libraries, continued with their normal ongoing book sales after the branch reopened and provided books to a local PTA that was organizing a kids' book giveaway for students preparing for the start of the school year. And it's a lovely statement. They tried to find as many ways as possible to make books available to the community. It was heartening that we were able to contribute even when our contact with the community is more limited than it used to be. True, true. And the next is one of Miriam's library, or Miriam's library. Yeah. Miriam, do you want to tell us anything more, or let me just read that? Miriam, are you there? Well, the Friends of Oakton held a monthly board meeting via Zoom and updated...
Oh, wait, wait, I'm sorry, I was on mute, talking to myself, talking very vigorously to myself.
Great.
You'd think after a whole day of Zoom, I would have gotten it. Anyway, in addition to what you see on the screen, they had a lovely book sale in September, and I'm actually looking at pictures on Facebook where they packaged the books in really attractive bags, almost like presents, and gave each one a title, a certain topic, so that people could come. And actually, I think I see a picture of Barbara Hippie right here on Facebook, and I know that she's in the audience here tonight. So thank you, Barbara, for continuing all your work for the Oakton Friends, and thank you all for the Friends for continuing work during this time and being so creative.
And the Friends of Oakton were at the foundation event on Saturday night with their bags. So that was pretty cool, too, see them. And I bought a bag of books myself. Okay, the next one, the Friends of the Richard Byrd Library, which is one of Keith's libraries. And I don't know if Keith wants to read this. I know that he, you know, this is his first board meeting, and he was going to... He'd asked for contact for the Friends. I don't know if he had a... Keith, did you have a chance to get in touch with him?
Yeah, just brief conversation, but I'll just jump right in as if I'm not... For the Friends of the Richard Byrd Library, I wanna give a special thanks to Judy Perry, who I did touch base with initially, and I see that she's online. So kudos to the great work here. And for what I see here, it just helps support the branch staff purchasing additional face masks with clear panels designed to assist the deaf or those with hearing disabilities. And I'm very happy to hear that, and I hope that that effort continues. In addition, continue to stock the daily book sales. So thank you, and looking forward to working with you, Judy, and your group in the near future.
Thank you. We're jumping right in. Thank you, Keith. The Friends of the Poehic Library, which is Phil's library. Phil, do you wanna add anything to the information that we have or let us know?
I'll have additional information every now and then I hear from Yolanda or I check the turban. Somehow, I'm a member, but I don't get notified when they're gonna have a meeting. I've asked several times, but I don't get notified of it. So I'll reach out to her again. I sent her a text when I saw this, not a text, an email today, and congratulated her on being appointed to the Foundation Board.
Yes, she's a force of nature, Yolanda. Lucky to have her around. She's amazing. The George Mason Friends, also Mason District. And I know when I have gone, sometimes when I've gone to George, I've seen the Friends and they're working. And as it says, they're working in branches to support the Amazon sales. And they have made cookies when the express services first began, individually wrapped for the staff. And they're just a wonderful bunch of people, like all the Friends groups, and just give such support to the branch. So kudos to all of them. The next one is Sheila's Friends.
Right, let me read. So they have been maintaining their ongoing book sales, and they started Zoom meetings in May. And Jessica and I, I guess, attended that first meeting. They are processing, purchasing books for... No, 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 they have purchased a banner that says "Welcome" in many, many languages. And that's really great for Reston because there's so many different languages that in groups we support here in Reston. They've purchased textbooks for the branch's new virtual citizen class. And one thing that I think is really special, they have lots and lots of volunteers. And then each volunteer group is responsible for something different. They have different types of sales in their big sale. And so the leaders of these little different groups have been checking in on the volunteers to make sure, you know, that everything's going well and that they need any assistance because their Friends group is really large. They have tons and tons of people in all these different groups. And I know that the volunteers miss meeting in person, but they do have an ongoing book sale that's been going on. So they're doing a great job. And Patrick Henry doesn't have, hasn't, didn't submit a story because they didn't feel like they had much to submit. They're part, she's, Patrick Henry Library is also part of the Hunter Mill, my district. But I would like to say that they had nominated Kelly Bennett to receive the Choice Award, and they were so disappointed that she wasn't gonna be able to come in person to represent Patrick Henry. And the president, Sharon Bowman, and her husband Bob are in Florida, so they haven't been meeting, but they're all anxious to get back to work, and they're looking forward to their next book sale. And they're looking for ways of handling the books, you know, the donations. So, you know, really, kudos to both groups. They're doing a great job, even though they can't meet in person.
Thanks, Sheila. Thanks for bringing up Patrick Henry. Friends of Lorton Library, well, as it says, a double whammy. They had to clear out their book sale for the Lorton remodeling and the, you know, and then also the pandemic hit. So that's what they did, and they also celebrated the groundbreaking. And so I guess we'll hear from them 2022 is when that's supposed to be finished. So maybe before then, if they're working behind the scenes, we'll see. Okay. Next is the Friends of the City of Fairfax Library. Suzanne is gonna let us know about that group.
Okay. We actually had a board meeting on Tuesday via Zoom. I feel like I've been on Zoom all week this week. But they are doing the... They merged the children's book sale with the ongoing book sale, and they're making a little bit of money slowly, slowly, and keeping busy. They've also reached out to local teachers with an opportunity to fill a bag with kids' books for $5. They've also offered some books to other, a couple of other groups who have inquired about getting some children's books. So they're working with the community to do that. And you want me to do the Friends of the Virginia Room next?
Yeah, just move right on.
Since it's on the flip side?
Yeah.
Or was it? No, it was Sherwood, I'm sorry.
No, it's Friends of the Virginia Room, and you're both...
They are, okay, sorry. The Virginia Room had, Friends had a board meeting. We meet quarterly, and our first board meeting was in September. And this Sunday, if you have nothing better to do, you're welcome to attend the Friends of the Virginia Room Annual Meeting via Zoom. If you're interested, drop me an email, and I'll send you the link. It's gonna be at 2:00. And our speaker is going to be the Virginia Room Branch Manager, Laura Wickstead, and she's gonna tell us about all the amazing projects the Virginia Room staff has been working on during the pandemic era. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Suzanne. The Friends of the Sherwood Regional Library donated three, and I have to read this because it's complicated, donated 3D printer filament funds to the Sherwood Library's tech lab to support the printing of headbands for county COVID face shields. So, hi tech, and good going. Thank you. Thank you all. Does anybody have anything they wanna add?
I have a question. I didn't see any of my libraries on here, and I don't know whether I was supposed to do something to get that because I don't even remember. You told me who the Friends were, I don't remember, so...
No, it was not an assignment of yours that you... Don't worry, don't worry. Library admin reached out, so I'm sure Jessica can tell us.
Yeah.
What happened with them?
We had originally reached out to all the Friends groups just to get some feedback and stories from them. And then we also reached out to branch managers for the libraries across our system, and we just didn't hear back from any of your locations. It's not that they're not doing fabulous work, I know it. Probably just got caught up in other things.
Okay. So maybe I can just reach out to you separately and get the Friends. I don't even know who the Friends are here. So I think Jane Miscavige told me she went, and I just never called her back to find out. Sorry, Jane.
I will get you connected tomorrow.
Thank you.
Yep.
Fran, if I can take the opportunity to be the new guy here, it just struck me that there may be people on this Zoom meeting that don't know what the Friends of the Library are either, besides us. Would it be okay to take 60 seconds to tell what it is and encourage them to join these groups?
I'm glad you brought that up, because I was sort of thinking that, too. Like, sometimes we just rush into things without thinking, well, wait a minute, maybe someone, a little introduction here. So each library is able to have a group of volunteers known as Friends, rather than just, we have other volunteers that are different from the Friends. Friends groups, they're organized, they usually have officers, they sort the new books. When books are donated to the library, the library then looks through them, and they keep what they want. They get first choice, and then they belong to the library Friends. And the Friends then can offer them for sale to the public. And so there are two kinds of sales that can occur. Are the daily, ongoing sales, or great big mammoth sales. And what we're missing this year are both of those. And the big regionals, which get a tremendous amount of donations, make thousands of dollars. And for example, the George Mason Friends, and correct me if I'm wrong here, Jessica, usually sponsors all or most of the summer reading game. That's how much...
Yeah, they typically donate about $50,000 to the summer reading program to support all branches. And the George Mason Friends have one of the biggest book sales. It's most of a week, twice a year. And I think they make about $50,000 or $60,000 at each sale.
Yeah, and they are, they're wonderful fun to go to. I, yeah, they're really great. And then the communities are more likely to have the ongoing sales. And they're always great to check when you go into the library because each community is a little bit different and gets a little bit different kind of donation and amount of donations. And I think George has just been doing that. I mean, I worked in Arlington starting in 1976, and even then, you'd heard about the book sale at George Mason Library. So that, I think, is sort of like a community tradition, and everyone knows that take your books to George Mason Regional Library. And so that's why, once a year, we ask Friends to write up a, you know, a recognition of one or more of their own volunteers for special projects that they've did, like, that they've done. Like, at first, when they started doing Amazon book sales, because every Friends group doesn't do that. And so then, you know, we started recognizing the individuals as well as the groups they belong to for the incredible work that they do for the library. They also provide funding to the foundation, and that, and the foundation also partners with them to invest their money and get a really good return on it. So there's a whole lot that goes on between the foundation and the Friends and the library system. It's a really good, it's just a great symbiotic relationship. And it has really, the whole pipeline just sort of came to a dead stop with the pandemic. So Jessica or anybody else wanna add anything as a sort of a review there?
Yeah.
Me.
Sheila?
Yeah. At Reston, they have this unique, they call it Charlie's Corner. And, I mean, every book sale is a little bit different. In this one, they have this, it's called Charlie's Corner, and they collect the most unique old books, books that you, that, you know, in art, in music. And I bought a Mrs. Beatty's cookbook that, you know, that talked about making creamed desserts back from, I don't know, the 19th century or something. I'm just a little, just fine. So, and then they sell CDs and records and all kinds of things that you really can't find anymore. And they do a wonderful, so like George Mason, they're very supportive of the library programs. And the Patrick Henry Library also has a big book sale, and that's one of the community libraries. So it's a treasure trove of all of these book sales, and they work so hard and give so much back to the library. So, yeah.
Wonderful Friends groups across the board. In a normal year, the donations from all of the groups is usually between $200,000 and $250,000, which helps support a lot of programs that the library could not do otherwise. So we're always, always, always grateful to the work of individual Friends and the money that Friends groups are able to provide and the community's support. They're just good folks.
Excellent, yep. Any other, any questions, or?
Thanks, thank you.
I just, I would like to say something. I'm Barbara Hippie with the Oakton Friends. Hi, guys. We have, I mean, the Friends are, it's kind of a feel-good thing where we like collect books and sell books and stuff, and all great. But we have a contractual relationship with the Library Board of Trustees and the county executive. And Miriam, you know, we went through this many years ago, a few years ago. It was really tough when we had to renegotiate our memorandum of understanding. And we continue to do good work, and we continue to have a good relationship. I think everyone pressed the reset button when that all went around. I just have to say that, you know, there's still things that need to be resolved. There's still, there's still things that need to be done. I feel like it's been a great new world the last couple of years, but there's still need, there needs to be some things done, and that's all I wanna say.
Okay, all right, thanks. So we'll move on to the minutes. I sent in my friendly amendment with some additions and corrections. Does anyone else on the board have any additions or corrections or questions about the minutes? Hearing none, I would like to ask for a motion to approve the minutes.
I move if they approve, Phil.
Thank you, Phil. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Minutes are accepted with my friendly amendment. Thank you very much. I have a very short report for the, from the chair. As we are, as you know, working on reviewing the bylaws and the policy, and I was reading through them and I saw that we are supposed to elect a representative to the foundation. And I think it's because Will Jasper, a member who recently retired, had been the foundation representative in most of, for most of us, for all of our memory. And so when he retired, we just thought, well, we'll appoint another one. But we really need to elect one. And so Suzanne has graciously agreed after being appointed to stand for election. So I would like to ask if there's anyone else who would like to nominate someone? And hearing.
I will nominate Suzanne because she hasn't been officially nominated.
I don't know that she did, but that's a good idea. Thank you.
I will nominate Suzanne.
Okay, fine. Thank you, Brian.
I see nomination.
Okay, I don't know if it needed to be seconded, but thank you. And now I would like to call for a vote. All those in favor of Suzanne representing the Library Board on the Foundation Board, please say aye.
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 No, say no, and then you will have to do it. No, okay. Suzanne, congratulations. You have been elected representative of the Foundation Board. So thank you. And now.
It's a good thing because she has a report coming up.
I know, exactly. That's exactly right. So now.
Fran, 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 can you tell me what we just did? Fran, what, what did we just, we just not, we just elected Suzanne? Suzanne to do what? Where?
She's representing us to the Foundation Board. The Foundation, the Library Foundation has its own board, which is not like the Library Board. It's not an appointed by the, it's, it's a, it's, it's an, I guess it's more of an advisory board. It's not a governing board like we are. So it's.
It advises whom? It advises us? Who does it advise?
The, the Foundation.
The Library Board, the Foundation Board advises the Foundation?
Yes. Yes. Yeah. They have an executive director who's staff. And then they have a board, which is made up of a wide variety of individuals who are from the community and bring either money or expertise or community attachments and point of view and work on a lot of the things that go on with the Foundation. And so the Chair of the, of the Library Board of Trustees also is a sort of ex officio member of the Foundation Board. And then we have an elected representative from our board who is a member of the Foundation Board. And the reason that Suzanne is already doing the job is because we appointed her, the Chair appointed, because we had not read carefully enough the, the bylaws and realized that the board needed to elect her.
Understood.
Yeah. Okay, great. Thank you. So now to committee reports and our newly elected representative. Suzanne, if you would give us a report.
I will. Thank you. Our next board meeting is December 8th and it will likely be a Zoom meeting as well. I was not able to attend their big event on Saturday night, but I wanted to congratulate Fran Milhauser and her husband Bill, who spent their 50th wedding anniversary at the Foundation movie at Chantilly Library. Fran reports that it was well-attended, maybe 30 to 40 people that they counted. Jessica was there. And the Oakton Friends evidently were participants, as Fran mentioned. There were silent auctions. They had two food trucks, one with barbecue and one with cookies. And, you know, it was nice to have something that people could go to as a family on a Saturday night. And there, the Foundation has been doing some programming. And I would just encourage you to take a look at the Fairfax Library Foundation website to get up to speed on what is going on. And I, this afternoon, I was trying, I had promised last month to forward you the Foundation budget and I had kind of forgotten about it. And this afternoon, when I was trying to do it, there was something wonky going on with the county email. And I, there was an email with like eight attachments and I was trying to delete all but the pertinent attachments. And they kind of got into a do loop or something and it wouldn't let me forward it. But about 25 minutes ago, I forwarded it to you. So check your county email in the morning and you can see the Foundation budget and get an idea of, of how they spend their money. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. And usually in October, the Library Foundation has their big gala fundraising, fundraiser, which is usually at, say, the newest remodeled or built library so that everyone gets a chance to see the brand-new building. And it's a, it's a big event with wonderful donated items to bid on. And elected officials come and we have music and catering and it's a great, and staff get to come. And so it's just a really, it's a really wonderful evening. And so knowing that, that that could not be done, the staff, the grants office worked really hard to figure out something that they could do that might raise some money and, and keep up community awareness of the Foundation. And so they came up with this. They had a, an inflatable movie screen. And showed a movie outside. So it was, it was really something. It was, it was fun. It got chilly with the movie, but we had blankets. Jessica, anything you want to add from the, the community fair part that I know you were there?
Sure. So the Chantilly Friends were there and participating as well because the original Jubilee had been planned at the Chantilly Branch. They had been collecting mystery books that went along with the theme, which was Clue. And were selling those as kind of bundled mystery kits. We had a number of community agencies from county departments that were there talking about the services that they provide and, or just a variety of other folks that were there. It was nice. It was the, you're right, the, the movie screen looked like a bouncy house.
Yeah.
Like one wall of a bouncy house.
Yeah.
That same type of fabric. But the Foundation did an awesome job of marking off spots on the grass to make sure that family groups were socially distant from each other. And one of the nice things that they did, both to support the movie event and to make some money, was that they bundled up a package. So if you showed up, you could buy tickets to the movie and a blanket and some popcorn for a little bit more than you would have bought just the tickets to the movie for. They got really good response from the participants. And so they're hoping to do future events like that regardless of our pandemic and socially-distanced staffs.
Yeah, and I saw Miriam, I saw Miriam there too, at the, at the community fair part of it too. And, and it's hard to, because everybody was wearing masks, I'm not always sure who I'm seeing, but I know, but I know that much. So, yeah, there you go. So it was, you know, a really good pivot from the, the regular thing that they would have liked to have done. And so, okay. So Finance Committee, Miriam?
Okay, thank you. So I just want to speak for, to a minute to our two new members. Welcome. I don't know if you, hopefully you have not had reason to have to immerse yourself into the county budget process, but it is not simple. And I, and I'm only saying that because we're going to discuss the county budget transmittal letter tonight. And there isn't really time to go through the whole budget process. But what I was going to suggest is that, two things. One is that in the materials, the board materials that Jessica and her team sent out, there's actually two really good documents. I'm holding them up as if you could possibly see what I'm holding. So that's kind of ridiculous. There's a discussion guide about the, about our involvement in the budget process. And there's also a calendar. And I was going to suggest that if you want, or either of you want to understand more about how the county develops the budget and how the library participates in that. We actually last, was it last session or the session before that? Had a briefing from our, one of the budget.
Oh, yeah, that was the July.
Yeah.
That was in July. But I'm sure that we could set up a special deep dive for both of you if you would like to learn more about it. For today, what we need to do, the Finance Committee met to approve the, the recommendation to the board that we submit what's called the transmittal document for 2022 budget submission, which as we've spoken about a number of times, is a flat budget, unfortunately, but not surprisingly given, given COVID and actually, you know, good that it's not more reduced. I thought, Jessica, since you are intimately involved with this, do you want to just walk through it for the board?
And I will.
So again, it's in the materials. It's like in the middle after the minutes.
It says the budget process at the top, right? And then there's a calendar right after.
Right.
Right?
Yeah, and I've got somewhere, I have.
You have the transmittal letters in here.
There we go.
There it is. There it is.
So I was just getting up. I have a cat moving at my door. So if you hear that in the background, apologies. So like Miriam said, the way that the, the library is a general fund agency of the county. So about 95% of our budget comes from county general fund. So at the start of the budget process, which is usually late August, early September, the county's Department of Management and Budget tells us that we're either going to have a flat budget or we can anticipate a decrease or increase. And then staff develop the budget from there. The real point of what the trustees have an opportunity to do is to advocate around the budget. And part of that is this budget transmittal memo. So the beginning of the budget talks about the dollars, which is the part that we don't have a lot of consideration over. This is how much we're told that we can have and that is how it's broken out. Because it's a flat budget, it's exactly the same as the adopted budget from last year. And you can see that the majority of our budget goes towards personnel with a little bit towards operating, which is books, contracts, technology, all, all the other stuff. Beyond that part is where the Library Board has a chance to request additional funds if they become available and as they make a good case, like you all have in previous years when we had additional funding added for Phase One of expanded and consistent hours. So there are two main asks in here, if the county has additional money at some point, which is very unlikely, but it doesn't hurt to put the ask out there. The first part is about the Lorton Library. The bond funding for the Lorton Library only covers the building itself. Anything that if you picked the building up, took the roof off, turned it over and shook it, wouldn't fall out. Everything that stays put is bond funding. But the library itself has to find the money to fund new furniture, books, technology, all of that stuff. We had put in a request for unencumbered carryover, which was declined because of needs to support COVID. So we're putting in a secondary request here for additional consideration for that. That's the kind of minor part of this request. The bigger part of the request is the Library Board's continuing support for expanded and consistent hours. This is the exact same request as what you put in your last budget transmittal memo that was included in the original draft budget for the current fiscal year that we're in. It's asking for Phase One funding, which is $875,000, which is eight addition, excuse me, nine additional FTE of staff and a little bit of extra money for our collection development budget. If funded, which again, please don't get your hopes up, but if it was funded, this would move all of our regional libraries, plus our three busiest community branches, to the new hour scheme, which is seven days a week at all locations, full day on Sundays, three evenings a week. And then the memo concludes with just some general language about good stuff for libraries, yay yay rah rah. So this memo, if you all approve as is tonight, will be the front of the budget packet that the library staff submits to our county Department of Management and Budget. And we will know later, December, early January, if there are any questions as the county compiles the budget together.
Is there any chance that the county will come back to say, we know, we told you it would be a flat budget, but indeed it's, it's even further reduced and you'll have to make some changes?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that is the unfortunate moment in time that we're in right now. So even though, and that could be done both for this budget submittal. Fiscal year 2022 runs July 1st, 2021 through June 30th of 2022. So it's the next fiscal year. And the county could come back and either make necessary changes to agency budgets for the current budget year that we're in, which is fiscal year 2021. And that's the one that ends next year, June 30th. Or they could ask for changes to our submitted budget that hasn't been reviewed by the board supervisors or had public hearings yet. The county is taking everything about the budget very, very seriously right now because they're trying to make sure that there's enough money to, to do all the general basic things on top of everything pandemic-related. So every agency has been told to, you know, monitor spending, not, not quickly run all your recruitments through. So our agency is required to hold 12 FTEs of positions vacant at any given point in time throughout the entirety of this fiscal year, just to save money. And that money will be dumped back into, maybe the county general fund. But they are doing monthly checks on the budget for every agency as well. And every agency is submitting a mid-year budget review. Ours is due Friday of this week. And they'll be bundling all that information with their forecasting that should come out early November as well. And there might be changes made from that.
Okay. And then just to reinforce, I know Jessica just said it, but it's worth just explaining yet one more time. This whole big fat middle paragraph talking about requesting the $875,000 for expanded consistent hours, that was the focus of the work that we did with the Coalition for Expanded Consistent Hours to get the increased funding overall so that our libraries could stay open longer and we could buy more materials. That money, if you remember, the first phase of, of which, which is exactly that same dollar figure, was, was included in this year's budget and we all said, hooray. And then it was taken back because of COVID. And so we are repeating it here, not because we really have any expectation of getting it this year, but to keep it front and center in front of the county, the county finance office. So not that they don't know that this is, you know, at the top of our list. We, the, the library is going to have to find money for furniture, but that, there is some time to do that. In fact, Jessica will be back from her maternity leave and plenty of time to figure out how we're going to find shares for Lorton. So a little less worried about that, although that's, that's also a very big number. Anyway, because of the situation we're in, the, the transmission is not really that controversial, but I am happy to open it up for conversation or questions. Yeah, Priscilla?
Hi, thank you. I feel like I, well, I appreciate your comment, Jessica, about the monthly reporting and that the agencies are, are being scrutinized carefully. I seem to remember there was a benchmark of January. Do you know if there's still a significant review at that time? And might we have any sense as to what the rest of the fiscal year would look like after that moment?
Good memory. Yes. So the mid-year reviews that are going on in every agency right now are being submitted on Friday. And then the county is compiling them and putting them all together. And then they're hoping to present that mid-year review to the board of supervisors in January. And that will help them decide if they want to take, make any big changes to planned expenditures. We've been doing pretty good. The county as a whole has been doing pretty good on trying to manage costs and fully expend every inch of grant funding that was available, both through the CARES Act and FEMA dollars, everything that was there. So I don't know what to expect. I can only say that our agency has been extremely frugal and trying to make sure that we're doing exactly what we've been asked to do so that there aren't harsher cuts down the line. So January, January is one moment. The board supervisors and the school board will have a joint budget session on November 24th, I believe. It's sometime right around Thanksgiving. And that's when they will have preliminary info from those mid-year reports, plus the county's budget forecasting, plus information about the real estate rules, but both commercial and prop, real estate, commercial and personal property taxes. So they're going to take it in a little bit end of November, think about it in December, really assess it in January. And then of course, the county's advertised budget comes out February 25th. So that'll be the, the big indicator. It seems so far like things. It seems so far like things are doing okay on the personal property side. Commercial property is certainly where there's more worry because there's more vacancies happening there. And fiscal year 2022 is the one where we would really start seeing that impact.
Jessica?
Yeah.
This is Liz. I was just wondering, how many FTEs does the $24.5 million personnel budget support?
That's a good question that I'm not going to give you the right answer for right now. I think it's about 430, 435, somewhere in the low end of the 400s.
Thank you.
Of course.
Any other questions?
Anybody else have questions right now? Okay, all right. So can I make a motion? I'll make a motion.
I was gonna say, I think we need a motion to accept. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so I'll make the motion that the board approve the FY 2022 budget submission letter.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Brian, seconded. And all those in favor, just raise your hands and wave on Zoom.
There any, any discussion?
Sorry. I dropped the gun.
It's all right. I often forget to ask for, all those in favor, say aye. Or raise your hand on Zoom. Yeah.
All right, great. Thank you all.
Okay, thank you, Miriam.
And please come to the next finance meeting because you see how super exciting they are, so.
They're really, they're very fast.
And they're on Zoom, so they're actually quite easy to attend now.
But I think, I just want to say, and I know I said this, Jessica and I did orientations for the two new board members. And I just want to say how important the budget is in the public arena and how important it is. One of the most important roles of each of us is to support the library's budget with their supervisor. And, you know, over the past few years, we've, we have really increased the awareness of the library to the supervisors and upped our image. And that's all due to the work of all the individual trustees. So we want to keep that up. And I think the understanding that we all have that this is a difficult time. You know, we're not going to go and say, we're going to give the library money because we know that things are rough and we're going to all pull together on that. But just to say how important that is for each and every one of us. So next to the outreach committee, Brian Engler, your report.
Yeah. All right. Everybody should have in their packet a copy, a draft copy in small form of the fiscal year 2020 annual report. For the new people, Sujatha and Keith, the library board had not put out a formal annual report until last year under Miriam's leadership. We did a fiscal year 2019 one. The fiscal year ends, of course, at the end of June. And that was very well received by everyone who saw it, including all the supervisors. And I think brought them on board and helped with the Coalition for Expanding Library Access get the money on the budget. And then we all, you know, pandemic, but whatever. At any rate, for the second year in a row, we have a formal annual report. If everyone doesn't care to see it, I won't ask Jessica to put it up on the screen and step through it. But I do want to say that I appreciate the fact that the staff did a wonderful job of putting this together all while separate and, you know, virtual, right? Just a great job from start to finish. There's a lot of good information in here. What we have to do today is approve this. And I'll make a motion in a little while. And then I understand there'll actually be printed copies, large form copies, you know, eight and a half by 11 copies, like a flip book, that will be given in numbers to all of us and to the supervisors and to lots of other people who are interested in it so that then we can refer to it when we talk to people about the statistics and so on. Perhaps the most important page in it is the statistics page. And I noted that they made an extra copy of that fiscal year 2020 snapshot. That's an extra sheet in here, which is great. I plan to keep that with all my other talking points and things because if, for example, you're interested in a return on investment, it's in here, answers, number of books and all. All of this reflects the fact, of course, that we are in a shutdown or we're in a shutdown through the end of June for the coronavirus. Things have changed since then, but this ends at the end of June. So is there any discussion or are there any questions on this? What it is, what we needed?
It's just beautiful.
Well, it's the staff. It's not, the outreach committee gets to talk about it, but it's really.
It looks lovely.
I just have a comment, I guess. I received my meeting packet when I got home this evening. And I didn't have any time to review the draft annual report. So in the future, if we're asked, being asked to approve it, maybe we could see the draft a little bit before the meeting packet or something to the effect because, I mean, it looks very attractive from what I, you know, I'm glancing at it. And I recognize I, we probably don't have that much of significant input to it. But if we're supposed to be endorsing it or approving it, it would be nice if we were able to read it prior to doing.
Okay. Well, Liz, you got a, you got a PDF form of all of this stuff about a week ago through your county email. So maybe if your county email is not working, you don't have that. But I.
My password was not working, but since then.
Ah, there you go. All right. Normally, we get it electronically a week ahead. So I, you know, I apologize. But, but yeah, I think you're right, though. You know, we don't, we obviously didn't want to print this thing before we approve it, but it's been reviewed by the outreach committee and others, so.
Well, I'll interject just for a moment here. Last year, what we ended up doing was just a general overview of the annual report in the board meeting. And then if trustees had any specific comments, I think we gave like a week period of time so that you had some time to look it over, make sure there weren't any grammatical or formatting changes that you wanted to recommend. So I know that we as staff would be happy to do that. If you all wanted to approve it in general at tonight's meeting and then send us any minor edits that you might recommend by, say, next week Wednesday, that gives us plenty of time to get it printed.
That sounds good.
Sounds good.
I think, I think the mail may have been delayed. I don't know with the mail-in voting or whatever because I didn't get my packet until yesterday. And I usually get it Friday or Saturday at the latest. And I talked to other people that it was a little bit late, later than usual. Sheila, did you want to?
I didn't get mine until this evening either, so.
Today, okay.
Same here.
Priscilla?
Sorry about that.
I got mine, yes.
Jessica, may I request that when the final version is posted to the website that we get that URL? Because that would be easy for us to share. And I don't want to forget to check.
Be happy to do that, yes. And like Brian mentioned, the same as last year, we are planning to provide you all with some print copies. And I would guess that the goal of the print copies is the same this year, that when things are a little bit more normal, you can take those with you when you're meeting with elected officials and constituents and people that you want to share these details with, you can hand them out if you'd like. And then we'll have the electronic version on the library board site. And we did a one-page kind of single document with all the statistics this year as well that you'll get copies of.
Now, do we need a motion, a motion on this?
Yeah, I'll make the motion if you want. I have a committee, a motion to approve the annual report for fiscal year 2020, tentatively with any changes to be sent to Jessica by her timeframe. And we'll get the final report next.
A second? Okay, is there any discussion before we vote? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Oppose? Hearing none, the motion is passed. Thank you very much.
I have a question, Fran.
Yeah, Keith.
If there are some possible revisions to this annual report, just from a board procedural aspect, where do I send it? Does it go to all the board members? Does it go to Brian? Does it go to Jessica?
I think to Jessica for staff. Correct? Is that correct?
Yeah, that would be fine. And if you have any substantial edits or feedback, we'll bring them back to the board. If it's grammar and formatting and stuff, we'll just make those changes.
Very good, thanks.
Fran, I have two quick other things for outreach, if I may.
Yes.
For our two new people, Keith and Sujatha, I want to, I don't know if you've gotten a copy of the Fall 2020 Talking Points. Looks like this, Fall 2020 Talking Points.
Is it in here? Did I miss it?
Oh, it wasn't in earlier?
Not in the most.
It had been in September.
The most recent stuff. I think he gave it out last meeting.
Yes.
At any rate, I just wanted them to know that the outreach committee, actually the staff puts these together. But the outreach committee gets the talking points originally. We make any changes that have to be done. And then we make sure all trustees get it so that when you're going to meet with your supervisor in particular or if you have to answer questions from people about things, the talking points are good for that. So you will see them. If you haven't already gotten a copy, you'll be, I'm sure you can send them, Jessica, the latest ones. And then we'll have one from December through whatever, January. The next outreach meeting is November 13th, Friday the 13th, in our clever way. We did that. And I want to welcome Sujatha, who I understand is on the committee now. So that's great.
Right.
Cool. Thank you. That's all I have.
I have a question. On the snapshot, if our supervisor would like to take snippets out of that snapshot for their newsletters, that's not a problem, is it?
Nope, totally fine.
Okay. Because I'm.
Could I just build on, Brian, the talking points?
Of course.
To Sujatha and Keith. I've found it really helpful when I get the talking points to just drop those in an email to my supervisor and their communications director. And then that way, they can put it in their newsletters. So that's just kind of a handy thing.
Yeah.
A lot faster than memorizing and trying to talk.
You don't memorize?
Well, not always.
No, that's a great suggestion. And I think we talked about that last month of our, in the orientation, maybe for finding out the name of the person in your supervisor's office who you're, either your supervisor, sometimes they want to get the information, but then it's also good to ask, is there a specific person that you would like me to send this to? And I think it's like what you're saying, Jane, it's usually both of them. I know, you know, that the supervisor wants it, but then also wants it to go to their communications person. But check and see what their preference is. That's the best thing. Okay, anything else? No? Okay, thank you, Brian, very much. And Policy Committee, Sheila.
Okay, the Policy Committee met on September the 25th. And our next meeting is Friday, October the 16th. At our meeting, we reviewed two policies. The first one was Policy P, which is recording the naming of libraries. We discussed adding and removing language to the policy that reflects including fixtures and spaces to buildings. So the first policy just talked about buildings, but we felt we needed to add fixtures and spaces, meaning meeting rooms or bookshelves or whatever within the title of this policy. We also discussed the naming and renaming process, which is ongoing. And Jessica's following up with county on questions that we have raised. So that's still an ongoing review. We also reviewed Policy J, which is regarding privacy for patrons, research and reading materials. And happily, we don't have to review it. It's, the update will hold, which was April the 11th, 2018. We learned from the county that it doesn't need to any, any updates. And then the last thing we, we talked about was Fran has tasked us with redoing the bylaws, the library board bylaws. And that we'll just begin that discussion on Friday. So are there any questions? Nope. Okay, okay, that's it.
Thank you, Sheila. And now we go to the director's report. Jessica?
Thank you. So I had a couple of items in your packet and I won't go into too much depth on those because you can read them as you'd like. But the good pieces are that our summer reading program was successful in the virtual format. It wasn't quite the same as if we did it in person, but it was still very well done. We had excellent support from staff on it. And the community was just really happy to have something to do. So it worked out nicely. We are planning to continue with the Food for Fines program this year. We had originally worried that it wasn't going to work out as well because we don't want to be handling as many incoming items that might be quarantinable. And we found a really nice solution to that working with our partner, Food for Others. So instead of us boxing up the materials and shipping them all to technical operations and they come to a big pickup, the really great volunteers from Food for Others are going to come do direct pickup from branch locations. So we're going to be focusing really heavily on direct donations this year. We've heard from them that they had a three to four time, three to 400% increase in need. So we didn't want to drop it entirely. And we've modified it a little bit. We're anticipating having some updated marketing materials for that in November. And we'll share that when we have them. And as you've seen both from an email and in your packet, the county has made Election Day 2020 and 2021 holidays. Even though our facilities will be closed for regular library services, any library that is a polling place will still be a polling place. Nothing is changing about that. We just won't be open for curbside or express services. But all of the facilities, except for Kingstown, that serve as polling places, have after-hours access for meeting rooms. So we'll be fine to go on those. And for Kingstown, we'll make sure to have security on site so that people don't get too excited coming in to vote and then stay and hang out in the library room around there. So, and a few other brief updates as well. Today was the first day of early in-person voting beyond the government center. And we have four locations that are participating this year, including Tyson's Piment, Thomas Jefferson, Hernan Fortnightly, and Centerville. And it apparently has gone pretty decently. We had pretty long lines at some of the locations, but having seen how long the lines were at the government center, it certainly wasn't that long, which was good. And early voting runs through the 30th. So if you need to visit Tyson's Piment, Thomas Jefferson, Hernan Fortnightly, or Centerville, or Great Falls on Saturday, just be aware that you might need to wade your way through voters to get into the library. In a socially distant manner, because they're all queued up in lines like that. I had sent you all an update via email about our quarantine practices for returned library materials. As of a couple of weeks ago, we had changed from four days to seven days based on the results of a study that was commissioned by the Federal Institute of Museum and Library Services. So we're up seven days right now. We're not charging fines if you drop your item off and it's sitting in quarantine for seven days. We've gotten a lot of questions about that. But the good part is when we increased the quarantine period, we were able to bring board books back into circulation because they had had a kind of an off pattern from everything else. So all of our stuff is circulating again, except for magazines, I think. And they're nice and clean and germ-free And, um, they're nice and clean and germ free by the time we get them back out for the public. The last brief update I had was we are partnering with the Health Department and the George Mason Regional Library is acting as a test location site for, um, walk-up, drive-up COVID testing. We're not publicizing it. It's meant to be a hyper local event, but it's gone really well so far. The Health Department is doing everything outside. They're bagging up their own stuff. They're not sending people inside afterwards. So it's been a nice use of the parking lot for an area that needed more testing. That's not really impacting library services. Those are all of my updates.
Thank you. And, um, now we're ready for the roundtable. Um, so where should, where should we start? I don't know. I see Jane. I'll start Jane and then we'll go around.
I, I don't have much, just that I've noticed, um, as school has started, a lot of people are still continuing to struggle with the impossible situations of having children in the home, working from home. So if you have neighbors with kids, please check in on them and remind them of all the ways they can escape this year, um, through our library. We have a lot of programs and the videos, um, you know, free subscriptions to newspapers and whatnot. So, um, just check in with people. We have a great resource to share to help them.
Good idea. I see Sheila. Sheila, how about you?
Well, I want to welcome our two new members. Sujatha, am I saying it right?
Yes, you are.
Good. And Keith. I said that one right. And I just want to, um, again, praise, thank staff for that wonderful annual report. I was so surprised that they were able to do as good a job. I won't say better than last year when it was all done remotely and through Zoom. I think it's just fantastic. So thank you for that.
Well, Brian.
Sure. I have Maya here. She had to get up on my lap. She's funny. I don't really have anything to add except, uh, another welcome to Sujatha. It's great having a full board and I look forward to working with everybody. Great.
Okay. Uh, Priscilla.
Thank you. Um, I also extend a warm welcome and I'm particularly excited to have some fresh perspective. And I, um, the, you know, we, we sometimes get into a rut of unconscious competency where we think we know. And then both of the, the explanations of friends, um, and the, the finance conversation taught me something. So it helps me, um, so I think we all need to make sure that we're asking those questions and not assume that, that, um, they wouldn't be welcome when we're having our presentations. I did have a couple of things that I wanted to share. Looking at the annual report, uh, when I was reading through it, I, it struck me the headings, um, of this report, access, innovation, technology, civic engagement and literacy. And all of those aspects are aspects of a, of a healthy and vibrant community. And the parallel between a healthy and vibrant library and how it can support a community is just right there in front of us. When you look at the wide variety of activities and the impact that our library branches have on our communities, it, I'm nervous about the budget cycle. And so I'm hopeful that this report will be really well used as leverage to illustrate the fact that for such a small amount of investment in a library budget in such a huge county as Fairfax County, what is being returned? And then I gasped, I was on mute, you couldn't hear me, but I gasped at that comment of 304 to 400% increase in need from the Foods for Fines organization. So I commend Jessica and staff for finding a way to continue to contribute to that. And then the last thing I wanted to add is that Diane Cohn, who works, uh, heads the Technical Services, after her great presentation at our last board meeting, um, one of my comments was that I recommended that SCPL look into doing diversity audits of their library collections. And, um, Diane reached out and we had a really great conversation. I felt like we were thought partners in the whole process. Um, I know I learned from that conversation. I think I owe her maybe a couple of documents that I referred to that I was going to share to her. So I'll make sure that she gets those right away. But I just wanted to say how much I appreciated that conversation and also, um, to be, uh, another example of how the school library programs and the public library programs can really, um, work to support each other. Thank you.
Suzanne.
Um, I just wanted to welcome Sujatha and Keith and say, I look forward to meeting you in person one day soon. I have a feeling it's going to be a while yet, but, uh, welcome to the board. And I think you're going to bring great new perspectives to us. So thank you.
Keith.
All right. Uh, well, I'm, I'm really excited, um, to be working with the board. You know, this is like a fire hose of education. I, I could probably write an article, 10 things your library does that you may not know. Learn more and more about what the library does and how important it is to the community. So I'm excited about that. And, um, I, I just, I also wanted to mention that there was a gentleman that sat in his seat prior to me, uh, Mr. Will Jasper. And I didn't have an opportunity to know him, but, um, I did do some research and read up about him. And he was a Titan in the volunteer community in Fairfax County. So I have to pay respect and those are big shoes that I can't fill. So, uh, lower your expectations. I'll do my best.
Thank you, Keith. Uh, Phil.
I'd like to welcome the two new members. I think Keith and I had sent an email back and I've, I maybe missed the other point. Again, I, the annual report, I think, is very good. I wish I had a better memory than I could remember all those things. So I need to carry it around with me when we talk, but I do get those things to, you know, my supervisor's office. And we mentioned Will and I just wanted to, you know, he was there. He was sort of quiet, you know, in our meetings. But is there anything that like we can do as a board, you know? I, you would send out the things, I sent his wife a, uh, you know, a sympathy card. But is there something we can do, uh, I don't know, to recognize him, to honor him, uh, in some way? I'm just maybe asking if anybody has any ideas, but that's my suggestion.
I'll go ahead and answer that because I know I've been working with, um, the foundation with Jessica on, um, writing up a tribute that we can put on our website. Because, um, I, I agree, his, uh, his quiet, um, strength and genuine dedication to the library was so evident, uh, for all of us. And, um, just the fact that, you know, how earlier in the meeting we had to, I had to sort of backtrack to take care of something because Will had always been there. And it just was the assumption that, you know, Will, Will takes, Will tells us about the foundation. And, um, and then all of a sudden there's that hole of the, of, that's left when someone, uh, who just quietly takes care of business. So thank you, Phil. Miriam.
I, I am glad that you mentioned Will because I know those of us who served with him all miss him. And I'm, I'm sure we will, um, recognize him from the library and, and individually. But he was on the board for a long, long time and I think his contributions, um, will be remembered. I just wanted to mention that, uh, two things. One is I participated in one of the Zoom, uh, Fall for the Book Author Readings with the author of Orange, Orange, which was, um, pretty interesting. And it was actually like cool to see them so close.
Yeah.
So that was kind of fun from the, from the luxury of my kitchen, although I have to tell you, I'm so sick of my kitchen. Can't wait to get out of here one day. Uh, and the other thing was that, um, I got an email from the, the Foundation Board. There was some board member survey and, you know, I'm not chair anymore, so I'm not on the Foundation Board. So I emailed back to say, hey, not on the board anymore, so I'm not completing your survey. And they are smart people because they emailed me back immediately and said, Lisa said, well, how about joining the board? So, um, so now I'm going to be a member of the Foundation Board and I'm looking forward to that.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, I think that's terrific. Okay, Gary.
At the beginning of the meeting, I had, uh, two things that I wanted to, uh, to, uh, to say. And the rest you, uh, have already said them, but, uh, they're so important, I want to say them too. One is of course, uh, give a public, personal, uh, welcome to the new members. And as Priscilla said, that you already made a significant contribution. The second thing was I wanted to make a personal, public goodbye to, uh, to Will. You know, Will, Will was my friend and partner in representing South County and, uh, Route 1 Quarter that, uh, our two districts share. And I know we all greatly admire and appreciate his long public service. You know, and that, not just on the library, but it's phenomenal. The, uh, other areas, uh, that, uh, he's made a significant contribution. Just say nothing about distinguished military career. So I, I, I wanted to say that and I thank the rest of you for, uh, speaking out too. So that everyone, uh, knows more about Will and how we feel about him.
Thank you. And Liz.
Uh, yes, I just, again, I would like to extend a welcome to both Sujatha and Keith. I'm no longer the newest member. I just joined the, the board, um, in March and then we went into a COVID lull. But things have been picking up lately, especially since we've had Zoom. And I'm sorry that I never met Will. He sounded, uh, like he was a wonderful person and really contributed to the board. But, um, it's really nice to hear the comments that I've heard this evening. Other than that, I was, I was hoping to have met with my two friends of Chantilly and, um, uh, Centerville Libraries. I have not been able to do that, so that's still on my agenda. And, um, uh, again, sorry about the, my, uh, password having a problem. I had to get a new one issued, but I didn't realize it was my password. So, uh, user error, always, always user error. Um, uh, great IT support again, Jessica. And, uh, again, welcome to both of the new, newest members.
Thank you, Liz. And then I just, um, I feel very lucky that, um, the Board Chair and the Director orient new trustees. And so I had a wonderful opportunity to, um, spend time, uh, with both the new members. And I think, um, they're going to be, I know they're going to be great and, uh, it's really great to have a full board again. What else was I going to say? I think that's about it. So, um,
Fran, you skipped Sujatha.
Oh. I did have a question.
I'm so sorry.
I mean, I don't have, I obviously have absolutely zero to add here yet, but I do have a question. Jane had said, um, when she spoke that, you know, we can share all of the offerings of the, of, available at the library with parents, with small children. And I wanted to ask if Jessica or Jane or somebody can tell me, what is the best way to do that? Where is the, what is the place? Is it just go to the library website? I mean, is that, what do I say? I would love to be able to do that because every time I go for a walk, there are all these poor moms with these small children in the neighborhood and they're just tearing their hair out. And I am like, I hate to be like, I mean, I, my child just graduated in, in June and I'm just like, I can't even imagine if I had to do this and she would have been 18 years old. So I feel for them. I would love to be able to do that. I would love to be able to champion the library here. I think that this is a great neighborhood to do that all around here is great. But what would you say is the best way? And maybe if anybody's watching online, because I did tweet at people to come and watch the board meeting. So I don't know. But if they, if they're watching, what would you suggest?
Okay. Jane?
Jane, do you want to go first?
Um, Jessica, you have a more organized way of explaining things, so I'll, uh, just
I'm not actually going to have a more organized manner on this one because it really depends. So it depends on the comfort level of the people that you're talking to about coming into a facility versus doing things virtually. If you've got families with young kids right now and they're really at home more often, we've got a really wonderful YouTube channel where we have been posting all of the digital content that we've created for young families. So Storytimes, Craft Times, um, any variety of kids programs that we've offered. We've been staving all of that. So you can go back and view it at any point in time. If you've got slightly older children who maybe want to have a more interactive process, we've been doing virtual programs for kids and tweens. And you can go to the library's event calendar and see what's coming up in your community. I looked at it a couple of days ago and there's a whole variety of things. So if you have, um, kids in your community who like esports, we have an online esports league. If you have kids that like craft programs, we have ones you can do together online. There's individual events that we do based on the time of the year and what staff have picked up. We have make and take crafts that are available. There's just all kinds of programs.
And then of course, Find those, Jessica, uh, if I went to the library website, go to the calendar. And I've gone to the calendar before. So all of those things, they link and they just, now that it's Zoom-ish, Zoomy, some stuff will be virtual and you can just go, does it ever link to the YouTube channel? Because that's pretty cool. I didn't realize that.
We don't post them to the YouTube channel until after they've happened. So it's not linked at the start. But it's linked afterwards.
So you, you videotape or you're recording what you do, you post it to YouTube after and the community can access that.
Yes.
That's really great.
Yes. And I think what I'm going to do, because I can feel myself getting too excited about the many varieties of things that we do, is I'll send you all a little compilation email tomorrow morning with some quick links of things that you might want to share depending on age ranges and interests and comfort level, either in a facility or outside.
That's so great. That would be such a great resource to share. Thank you so much.
How about, I'm sorry, how about sending it to all of us?
Absolutely. Yes, I was going to send it to everybody.
The genesis of my, um, my comment was actually, I mean, we talked a little bit about kids and there are a lot of things for kids. But for adults who are struggling, um, because they've just, they're just done with the pandemic and they're not being their best selves, maybe, maybe we know some people like that in our lives. Fred and I were just talking the other day about, okay, what's the opportunity here? If I'm heading into a long, dark winter, what do I want to look back on? And there are so many online courses through the library. So there's a ton of stuff for adults as well that can just really help, um, just make things a lot more interesting.
So can you add that?
I can. I'm actually
Online courses.
I'm scrolling through some email links I have right now. Our wonderful folks in library marketing just put out a, it was like an article with some news, uh, pieces and books linked in about like self-care and wellness. So that we're always trying to remind people of the stuff that we have available that might tie into the moods right now. Like it's turning to fall, it's getting a little bit colder. You might want to go grab something with some pumpkin spice in it, or you might be getting a little antsy about what's going to happen when it's cold and dark out. I'll, I'll work on the kids one first and then I'll, I'll circle back to the adult one.
Thank you, Jessica. Thank you, Jane. I appreciate that so much.
Anybody have anything else?
Yeah. I was just going to mention that, um, Ancestry's Library Edition is now going to be available remotely free through the end of December. It's been available throughout the pandemic. Prior to that, you had to come in to the libraries to use it. So if you've wanted to get into your genealogy, here's an opportunity to do it from home. And it can lead to a lot of interesting things. And if you have questions, you can email the staff at the Virginia Room, who will be happy to go a little deeper for you. And there are many other databases, Sujatha. You can learn a language, the Mango Languages, and there's another one, I think, Jessica. And
Oh, yeah. Rocket something.
Yeah. If you want to learn a language, there's online language courses and just so much more.
You know, I tried using Lydia, um, and I got strange messages and I couldn't get into it because I wanted to
Oh, Lynda.com?
Yeah.
Yeah. It, I will be happy to walk anyone who wants to through it personally.
What is it?
Lynda.com.
Language ones?
No, Lynda.com is like a training database. So you can go on and you can learn new tech skills, creative skills like photography. It's got a whole bunch of horsework that you can take. So you can do a series of trainings and then get a certificate at the end that proves that you've done this thing that could help you get a job. But the, the difficult part with Lynda.com is that it's owned by LinkedIn. And so if you log in one way, they're going to try and make you pay for it. You have to go through a really clear set of steps to make sure that you log in through the library's version. So you don't have to pay for it. You still have to set up a account.
Are you saying Lynda, like the name?
L-Y-N-D-A.
Yeah. And I thought I thought, but I, I didn't follow the, I thought I did. I tried it a couple of times and I went, well, okay. I don't know. I'll ask. All right. That's great.
Okay. Publishing the Branch Out Newsletter, our publication, and is that online? Because when I first came on board, I read through my edition that was put in my orientation packet. I was blown away with all the things that were happening around Fairfax County and the libraries. That is another great way of, of finding out what is happening. And one of the things that I think we heard this evening is that every library has different programs from the other library. So just because it's happening at one library, it's not necessarily duplicated at the other. So they all offer really some very, very variety and interesting. And I thought this was an outstanding publication, uh, Jessica. So I haven't seen any other editions except for what was in my original packet. So I don't know about distribution or if it's online. I haven't checked to see if I could find it online.
It's both. So we are still doing, it's a quarterly magazine that the library publishes. And it's meant to be kind of a, an evergreen document. So instead of a monthly listing of programs and events that get outdated pretty quickly, that one talks about services and programs that and programs that we know are going to be continuing. It's published on a, like, a seasonal basis, spring, summer, fall, winter, and we are doing both online and in-print publication, although the print run is much smaller right now. So I'll include a link to the latest Branch Out in the email I send around tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
Of course.
Anything else from anyone? Before I ask for a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? No. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, I declare the meeting is adjourned. Where's my? Okay. Thank you all.
Thank you, Fran.